All right, so it's seven o'clock on Tuesday, October 9th, 2018, and I'll call the meeting to order. And the first thing we'll do is stand for a moment of silent reflection if you wish. All right, is there any declaration of just generally thereof? None. Moving to the minutes of September 17th, 2018, and we're on second to approve those. Council McKinnon and Council Hendricks. All those in favor? Opposed and that's carried. We have a few items for delegations and timed events. So at 7:05, we have the public meeting for two different zoning bylaw amendments. And then at 7:15, we have a committee of adjustment for minor variance. So moving on to the correspondence. The first section there is upcoming conferences, seminars, and meetings. So our next regular meeting is November 5th, and then November 19th. And then we have our inaugural meeting on December 3rd. On Tuesday, November 13th, is the Emergencies Emergency Control Group. And I believe so, just mark that in your calendars, Stephanie Stockman, and who else is on that committee? Either of those two?
No, Mary Ann has attended in the past.
I've attended whenever, Mary Ann.
Excellent, so just mark those down. And then on Saturday, November 17th, is the Wardens banquet for our current Warden, Councilor, or Warden Wilkins. Anybody who's interested in tending. And then item number six is the OGR Housing Open, which is on Tuesday, November 6th, 2018, at 10:00 PM. AM, sorry, it's been a long day, just so you know, I've had county council at noon, and it was a long meeting of up until 4:30. So quickly got home and then got off this meeting. Moving on to the next section, which is correspondence. Item number one is from AMO. It's the policy update on cannabis retail legislation. We have an update on the cannabis update from our clerk later on in our meeting. Item number two, also from AMO, and it's a policy update on Bill 36. Item number three is from Blue Water Recycling, and it's the September 2018 minutes. Item number four is from Union Gas, and it's the transportation service rate notice. Item number five, also from AMO, and it's an update to Bill 31. And the last one is from the Assala Bayfield Conservation Authority, and it's the Board of Directors meeting minutes. Any questions on any of the course lines? Need a motion to resolve the council receiving file correspondence item CC-1 to CC-6. Council Sanders and Council McKinnon, all those in favor? Opposed and that's carried. We're gonna jump into our first section there, which is our public meetings. So we need a motion to resolve that the public meeting to hear zoning bylaw amendment application ZBA 13 2018, as well as ZBA 14 2018, be open at 7:05. Council McKinnon and Council Hendricks, all those in favor? Opposed and that's carried. Okay, so just before we go ahead for those public meeting applications, the purpose of the following public meetings for the Allen MacCap Council is to give the members of council, as well as the general public, an opportunity to hear all interested persons with respect to the applications before council this evening. The public is advised that comments expressed and written material presented are a matter of public record available for full disclosure. If a person or public body files an appeal of a decision made this evening to the local planning appeal tribunal without having made a written submission to council, the tribunal may dismiss the appeal. If you wish to be notified of the decision, please submit a written request to the township, and a assignment sheet has been provided for your convenience on the table in front of me. So our first public meeting is for zoning bylaw amendment 13 2018, which is John and Jean Milligan with the authorized agent Ken Milligan, and that's for 4121 Creavy Drive. Welcome. And Ken, you've received the planning report from Erin?
Yes.
Excellent. Let Erin go through the report.
Sure. The first application before council tonight is a report offering favorable consideration for a zoning bylaw amendment application submitted by Ken Milligan for John and Jean Milligan. This is the property known as 4121 Creavy Drive. The purpose and effect of ZBA 13 is to implement a condition of consent, which was previously imposed by this committee of adjustment for consent B07-2018 on July 23rd this year. The committee conditionally severed a 0.72 hectare or 1.79 acre parcel of land in order to facilitate the disposal of a surplus farm dwelling. Through this application, the applicants are proposing to amend the zoning of the severed parcel from general agriculture to surplus dwelling. This is to recognize the residential use of the lands and prohibit agricultural use on these lands as well. In addition, the application is proposing to amend the zoning of the retained lands from general agriculture to agriculture only to prohibit additional residential uses on the remnant farm parcel. Planning staff note that no zone change is proposed for the portion of the land currently zoned environmental protection. The application was circulated as per the Planning Act. The Conservation Authority indicated no concerns, and no other concerns were received. Based on this, planning staff support the proposed zoning bylaw amendment and have drafted a bylaw for council's consideration this evening. And I would recommend that council proceed with the first, second, and third reading of the implemented bylaw as a deposited reference plan has been received by the township.
Okay, thank you, Erin. Ken, do you have anything you'd like to add at all?
I don't have anything.
Is there anyone in the gallery wishing to speak to this application? Same none, any questions or comments from council?
Nope.
All right, so we're gonna hear this application, and then we're gonna have the next one. And then we're gonna close the public meeting, and then that's when council will make the decision for approval for refusal of the application. Do anything else you'd like to add, Ken, or is everything good?
No.
Excellent. So we're gonna move on to the next application then. So the next application is for Hugh and Andrea McKeller at 24042 Dun Donnell Road. And we have Hugh here.
Yep.
Excellent. And you have also received your planning report from Erin?
Yep.
Erin, would you like to go through the report?
Sure. The next planning application before council is a report offering favorable consideration for zoning bylaw amendment application submitted by Hugh and Andrea McKeller. The property is known unisically as 24042 Dun Donnell Road. The purpose and effect of this bylaw amendment is to implement a condition of consent that was previously imposed by this committee of adjustment for consent B23 2017 on December 4th of last year. The committee conditionally severed a 0.4 hectare or 1 acre parcel of land to facilitate the disposal of a surplus farm dwelling. Through this application, the applicants are proposing to amend the zoning of the severed parcel from general agriculture to surplus dwelling. And as well, they are proposing to amend the zoning of the retained lands from general agriculture to agriculture only. The application was circulated as per the Planning Act requirements. The Conservation Authority indicated no concerns, and no other concerns were received. Based on this, the planning staff support the proposed zoning bylaw amendment and have drafted a bylaw for council's consideration. I would recommend that council proceed with the first and second reading of the implemented bylaw, with the final reading to be given once a deposited reference plan has been submitted to the township.
Thank you, Erin. Do you have anything you'd like to add at all?
The only thing I'd like to say, I guess, is wanna thank Kathy and Erin for all their patience. And I did make something I'm not very familiar with functional. So I appreciate that very much. And I know Nick's not a big fan of severances, but down my part of the township, I think there's some value to them. That's it for me.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the gallery wishing to speak to this application? Same none, any questions or comments from council? Thank you very much. So with that, we need to have a motion to resolve that the public meeting to hear zoning bylaw amendment applications, ZBA 13 2018, as well as ZBA 14 2018, be closed at 7:10 PM. Council Hendricks and Council Sanders, all those in favor? Opposed and that's carried. Okay, so we're gonna deal with the first one, which is the ZBA 13 2018 at 4121 Creavy Drive. We have the recommendation there for approval. Council McKinnon, and seconded by Council Sanders. There's no more discussion, all those in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. And then the next one there, which is ZBA 14 2018 at 24042 Dun Donnell Road, and the recommendation is for approval. Council McKinnon and Council Hendricks, all those in favor? Opposed, and that's carried. So for both those applications, the bylaws will be approved at the end of the meeting. We're too early for the minor variance, so we're going to move into our first staff report, which is from our public works manager, Jeff Low.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, the first report I have tonight, they're both actually due a speed reduction in the municipality. The first one is a report on Melwood Drive speed reduction. On June 18th, Fred Cahill presented, came to council for a request for a speed reduction on Melwood Drive. I think everybody knows Mr. Cahill owns a business that includes horseback riding in that area. Did a little investigation myself out there. I can say for sure that this section of Melwood Drive does have very little shoulders. There is a slight reduction in sightlines. There is a bridge in the area of consideration. And after we did a traffic count, it was determined roughly about 200 cars a day go through this section of road. The municipality does have the right to lower speed limits if conditions warrant it. The Highway Traffic Act allows it through bylaw. So there is some conditions there. We further, Kathy and myself, met with Constable Rob Walker of the OPP to just get his opinion on the conditions that are there. And, you know, conditions that other municipalities have used in the past to lower the speed limit in certain sections. After Mr. Walker reviewed the conditions, in his opinion, the conditions warrant a hazard at this location. Basically, you're introducing horseback riding to the public driving with they have to actually share the road with this section. So there is a hazard there, in his opinion. So if there's a hazard at this point, we, as a municipality, have a responsibility to one, who are in the public, that there is a hazard there, and try to minimize the risk of the hazard in this location. So I'll get a little further on. After Constable Walker did talk about if we do decide to change the speed there, the OPP is more than willing to work with us, and maybe the public. They had lots of ideas, other than directly going to enforcement with speeding tickets there. So there is other things to follow up here if we decide to go further with this. If we do decide to go with a lower speed limit there, the financial impact on the municipality would be roughly about $1,600. And that basically is a set of signs, more than a set of signs. There's actually a number of signs that should go up, including horseback riding warning sign. There is an MTO spec horseback warning sign, and it should also be introduced in this location so that you have a reduction in speed. And the reason why is there's horseback riding. To kind of work together there, so. So as the report, I do resolve that council, my recommendation is that council approve a creation of a 60 kilometer hour speed zone on Melwood Drive for roughly a distance, starting at Kerwood Road, for roughly a distance of 1,000 meters, with also the warning signs of horseback riding taking place in this section of road. And secondly, resolve that council direct the clerk to prepare a speed limit bylaw that includes the reduction on Melwood Drive.
Thank you, Jeff. Are there any questions or comments from council?
So. So the signs, the $1,600 roughly?
Yep.
Does that include all the signs?
Includes all the signs in the installation.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's pretty reasonable.
And again, I can't guarantee that there's still not going to be, this is gonna make correct the perfect situation, but I think it addresses that there is horseback riding in the area, and that there is a hot hazard of traffic meeting horses, so.
Yeah, but I think it satisfies the person that's requesting this. I'm hoping it does.
It does.
And are you?
I am thrilled.
Well, I hope, but I mean, if there's anything else, I would hope Fred will come up with it at this time, because we've been working on this for a little while. And I'm very impressed that you got it done so quick. Because I am. Because I thought this was gonna take another year, and I know Fred's been waiting, and there's people on Pike Side are the same situation. So yeah, I'm happy that you got done what you got done.
And Mr. Mayor, the conditions there do warrant it. It wasn't just Fred. It just wasn't, we looked at the conditions of the road, the sightlines, and what's going on there. So in the future, moving forward, if further requests come in, we have to look at the conditions of the road and go from there, so.
Are there questions, Stephanie Stockman?
I think it was good that you got the OPP involved, because they have a lot of expertise in that. So I think that puts more credibility to the whole process as well. And Mr. Mayor, the OPP had a lot of great suggestions. They pointed out, I wasn't going to list everything in this report, because a lot of it has to do, again, there's another report following this one on the Pike Side Road. Everything's a little bit different. They all have their own conditions, they all have their own reasons why we look at this sort of thing. But yeah, the OPP, Mr. Walker was extremely helpful, and had a lot of great suggestions that Kathy and I both said we'll follow up with. They're not, not every single one suits Melwood Drive or suits Pike Road, but I think a combination of what he came in and suggested would work. And a lot of it has to do with educating the public.
Yep.
Telling them that, yes, there is a speed zone change here. We're not here to ticket people, we're here to slow people down.
Yep. That's good, very good.
Any other questions at all? So the recommendation there, and the first one is for the approval of a creation of a 60 kilometer speed zone on Melwood Drive, starting at Kerwood Road easterly from a distance of 1,000 meters. And that the warning signs of horseback riding on the road we posted at various intervals in advance of and within the reduction speed zone. Second under, Council Sanders and Council McKinnon.
Can I ask a question? Is it too late to ask that question?
I run a tight ship around here, I don't actually allow, the gallery do.
No, I'm okay. Does 1,000 meters get us to the hill?
Yes.
Great. Yeah, you run a tight ship, you know the job.
Thank you. Okay, so that's moved and seconded. If there's no more discussion, all those in favor? Opposed and that's carried. And then the second part of the resolution, what we're going to do is, our resolution number 11 and 13, we're gonna combine as one after we deal with the Pike Road report. But we're gonna do a little bit of the recess between those two reports, because we have a committee of adjustments to do at 7:15, which are beyond that point. So we need a motion to resolve that council convene as the committee of adjustment for the purpose of hearing minor variance application A03 2018 with Adrian and Jenny Rose at 8 Evergreen Court at 7:20 PM. Council McKinnon and Council Hendricks, all those in favor? Opposed and that's carried. And before I go into that application, the purpose of the following public hearing for Allen MacCap Committee of Adjustment is to give members of the committee of adjustment, as well as the general public, an opportunity to hear all interested persons with respect to the application before the committee this evening. The public is advised that comments expressed and written material presented are a matter of public record available for full disclosure. If a person or public body files an appeal of decision made this evening to the local planning appeal tribunal without having made a written submission to the committee, the tribunal may dismiss the appeal. If you wish to be notified of the decision, please submit a written request to the township, and a assignment sheet has been provided for your convenience on the table in front of me. So do we have Rose or Jenny? Excellent. Jenny, I was calling, that's right, your last name is Rose. My apologies. And you've received the report from Erin. Excellent, Erin, would you like to go through the report?
Before the committee this evening is a report offering favorable consideration of application A03-2018 for minor variance submitted by Adrian and Jenny Rose. This property is known unisically as 8 Evergreen Court. The applicants are seeking relief from the township violating MacCap's comprehensive zoning bylaw as it relates to the maximum height requirement for an accessory building. Specifically, the applicants are requesting permission for the construction of an accessory building with a maximum height of 6.1 meters or 20 feet, measured from grade to peak, whereas the maximum building height for an accessory building is 5 meters or 16.4 feet, according to the zoning bylaw. This variance has been requested in order to permit the construction of a storage shed in the rear yard of the subject property. The applicant has advised that the increased height is required to accommodate taller-than-average garage doors to allow for the storage of a personal recreational vehicle. The subject property is approximately 4,302 meters squared, or 1.06 acres, in size, and contains a single detached dwelling serviced by a private well and septic system. The proposed location of the accessory building would allow the applicant to utilize an existing access onto Evergreen Court. Planning staff have evaluated the minor variance application based on the four tests outlined in Section 45 of the Planning Act. The first test being, are the variances considered minor in nature? Although the proposed accessory building would exceed the height requirements by 1.1 meters or 3.6 feet, it would be comparable to existing accessory buildings located in the area. Furthermore, the proposed accessory building would be set back from Evergreen Court by approximately 45 meters or 147 feet, with trees acting as a visual buffer from the streetscape. The second test is, are the variances desirable for the appropriate use of land? The surrounding land uses are predominantly residential and agriculture, and as several neighboring properties have large accessory buildings, the proposed building would not be out of character for this area. Number three would be, do the variances maintain the general intent and purpose of the official plan? The subject lands are designated residential area, and the proposed variance would maintain the existing residential use of this land. Finally, do the variances maintain the general intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw? And the intent of restricting the height of accessory buildings is to ensure that accessory buildings remain subordinate to the main use of the property being residential. It is the opinion of planning staff that the size and usability of the proposed accessory building would not be unreasonable for a large residential lot such as this. Planning staff is satisfied that the application meets the four tests of the Planning Act required to grant minor variance. In accordance with the Planning Act, the application was circulated. The township's chief building official requested that the proposed building be located far enough from the lot line so that the final grading slopes away from the accessory structure without adversely affecting the neighboring properties. He also requested that east troughs be installed on the accessory structure to direct water away from the lot lines to the satisfaction of the township. No other concerns were raised. Based on the previous, planning staff recommend that application for minor variance A03-2018 be granted, subject to the following condition: that the subject accessory building includes east troughs along the length of the building's fascia. Fascia?
Fascia.
And any related downtime would be directed from any neighboring property to the satisfaction of the township's chief building official.
Thank you, Erin. Adrian, you have anything you'd like to add at all?
No.
Is there anyone in the gallery wishing to speak to this application? Same none, any questions or comments from the committee of adjustment?
Nope.
Stephanie Stockman?
In April, we did one for a neighbor 10 lots north, and it was actually a little bit higher. So I have no problem with this. It almost looked like the same building, except it's a little smaller footprint.
Is there any other questions? No? Okay, so we have the recommendation there with the one condition. Somebody wants to move that? Council Hendricks and Stephanie Stockman, all those in favor? Opposed and that's carried. Okay, thank you very much.
Hugh, thanks.
Okay, now we need a motion to resolve that the committee of adjustment be closed at 7:26 PM. Council Sanders and Council McKinnon, all those in favor? Opposed and that's carried. So we're gonna jump back into our staff reports with the next speed limit report, which will be on Pike Road.
Mr. Mayor, this is the second report tonight with respects to a speed reduction.
Oh, sorry, Erin, thank you.
On July 9th, a little bit of background, on July 9th, Lindsey Rinker brought forward a request to council for a speed reduction on Pike Road between the CN tracks and Heliab. Council at that time requested staff to investigate and report back on the need for a reduction in the posted speed on Pike Road, which currently is at 80 kilometers an hour. A bit of a background, Pike Road from the CN tracks to the Heliab is approximately 650 meters long, and has over 20 residential properties along it. There is no sidewalk on Pike Road at the present moment. The residents do have to walk along the side of the road if they want to walk along in front of the properties. The intersection in between is Napperton Drive, which is County Road 39. They currently, at this point, have a speed on Napperton of 60 kilometers an hour. The daily traffic count exceeds 1,500 cars a day in this little section of road, roughly. So that, basically, the Highway Traffic Act spells out that 80 kilometers an hour for rural roads and 50 kilometers an hour for built-up areas. I believe as Pike has been, with the residential properties that have been growing along Pike, I do believe, in my opinion, that it has become a built-up area, and that would warrant a reduction in speed. Again, we talked to the Constable Rob Walker of the OPP and asked him to, again, look at some of these conditions in this section of road. And it was, in his opinion, also that this section of road does warrant a reduction in speed. I think, really, to be honest, with Napperton already at 60, we're allowing our traffic to come in at 80. I think it warrants a reduction there. I think that's what the Highway Traffic Act lays out. In this report, I stuck to 50 kilometers an hour due to that that's what's in the Highway Traffic Act, that's listed in the Highway Traffic Act. That does not mean that council cannot make up, again, it's a reduction in speed to what it believes if we want to match 60. But I believe with the Highway Traffic Act recommending 50 as their built-up area, and if we're allowing this to be a built-up area, then we should follow through with 50 kilometers an hour. And again, Mr. Walker, OPP, Constable Walker, had lots of great ideas to follow up with on the education of people in the area. Again, we're not gonna surprise anybody, it's an educational, we want everybody to know that it's time to slow down in this area. know that it's time to slow down in this area, so. Financially, it's a little less than the previous report, probably closer to about around twelve hundred dollars, just because there's fewer signs involved with this reduction in this zone. So I resolved that, Mister Mayor, that counsel approve a reduction in speed on Pike Road from currently eighty kilometers an hour down to fifty in the section listed above, which runs from the CN railway tracks north, passed through the intersection just north of Heliav, which would include the last residential lot of two eight zero three zero Pike Road. And again, to, to also second resolve that counsel direct the clerk to prepare a speed limit bylaw that includes the reduction on Pike Road.
Thanks, Jeff. Any questions or comments at all from counsel?
No, I think, I think it should be fifty there, if that's what they recommend, and I'm glad, again, that we got this done so quick, 'cause we were talking a couple months ago, well, we can't slow the speed, and we got bigger signs apparently, so I'm really happy with this, and I think it's due, it's time.
Counsel Hendricks?
Yeah, I'd agree. It always astonishes me that people will drive eighty right up to a big stop sign, so, and because they have to stop, the extra ten down to fifty is totally warranted. They have to stop there anyway, I don't know why they're racing over the tracks to get to a stop sign, but it's, it's, I've been on that road quite a bit in the last little while, and it's crazy.
Well, it's a lot of traffic.
Counsel McKinnon?
Just for clarification to Jeff, so, the speed limit will be fifty to the CN tracks, and then from the CN tracks, it becomes eighty again?
Yeah, it, yes, it'll transition up to eighty, so it'll, we don't have to go from fifty to sixty to seventy, it can transition from fifty to eighty.
From fifty to eighty.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause there's no houses there anyway, so you're okay there.
I think it's good.
Deputy Mr. Stockman?
And now that the CN has fixed the tracks, they can go eighty over that too without causing the big bump.
Yes.
Hopefully it stays that way now.
Okay, any other questions or comments? I just had one if I could. So you're recommending from the CN tracks north, is the sign, do you imagine the sign being on the north side of the tracks or the south side of the tracks?
The, the fifty kilometer zone will start north of the tracks, but the warning to slow people down will start on the south side of the track, so, I know there's the depot laneway there, we'll figure that out, but because we're going from an eighty to a fifty, we have to give a warning zone to warn traffic, so the fifty ahead signs will be to the south, whereas the signs to the, the zone itself will be north of the tracks.
Okay, could, just knowing from the, yeah, looking at the...
And then again, I know there's a laneway right there, and, and there's actually two lanes, one on the north and one on the south, so as we erect the signs, we're gonna have to be careful exactly, because there's gonna be railway signs and that sort of thing, so, sightlines and, and, well, yeah, so there's lots of signs gonna be in that area, so we want the zone to be on the other side of the tracks.
Okay.
Is, is, is what we're going for there, so.
Yeah, and that's what I was gonna say, I don't know where the sign would go, just because there is, you know, wanna be able to see it because of the tracks, and then also there's that laneway right across the track, so I didn't know if we should have it somewhere on the south side, just so then, then, you know, before the transfer station.
Transfer the station, but that's our part is, we keep moving it back, keep moving back, and then we're further to the south.
Yeah.
Into a rural area. We use the tracks as the...
Where it starts.
The, the area, but we do wanna include all the residential properties there. That's the goal of this, is to, to have people slowed down by the time they get to the railway tracks.
So there will be a sign on the other side indicating...
On the south side, there will be, on the south side, there will be, that's where the speed zone will start to reduce. It'll be up the road a considerable distance from the transfer station, and then where the fifty kilometer hour sign is, we have to be careful there, it, it may be on the south side, just because of the CN owns the property of the tracks, and then we have the laneway right there.
Yeah.
But really, what, what I'm trying to get at through this report is that we're trying to slow people down from the railway tracks to the corner. Where the sign itself will exactly be, it may be on the south side, just, just to allow visibility and the proper location of it, but for, for stopping everybody is the CN tracks and what we're using just to be as the beginning of it, so.
Yeah, I understand, yeah. I personally, I'd like to see it more on the south side, just because I think people see the sign on the, on the north side of the tracks, they're typically, when people see a, a speed sign, they don't slow down at that sign, they slow down beyond the sign, and by the time that happens, then we're halfway to the stop sign anyways, so, yeah. Deputy Mr. Stockman?
I think that's where Constable Walker comes in again, 'cause he has the expertise, and he would be able to tell you where the best spot is to put it, I would think.
And, and definitely we'll get, we are gonna follow up, if this report goes, goes through, we are gonna follow up again with Mister Walker to, to then start laying out and putting this in place, and the MTO traffic, or the Ontario Traffic Manual, does specify quite readily sightlines to also to on that, so, the direction of the sign, it may move in the south a little bit, but we don't wanna get the zone too far to the south, is what we're going for with this report, so.
Excellent, okay, there's no other questions or comments, we have the recommendation there, and it's resolved that counsel approve a reduction in speed on Pike Road from the current eighty kilometers an hour to fifty kilometers an hour in the section of Pike Road from the CN railway tracks north, past the intersection of Heli Avenue, to include the residential lot located at twenty-eight zero three zero Pike Road. Counsel Hendricks and Counsel Sanders, all those in favor, opposed, and that's carried. And then the second part of that, of those reports, is resolve that counsel direct the clerk to prepare a speed limit bylaw that includes the reduction on Pike Road and Melwood Drive. Deputy Mr. Stockman and Counsel Hendricks, any further discussion? All those in favor, opposed, and that's carried. So, moving forward, the speed limit reduction does not take place until the bylaw is in place. So, oh, I'm not sure, we should ask a question to you here. Jeff, Jennifer, what's the timeline are we thinking for that?
If I may, we, we plan to discuss it, and we're looking to have it ready for the November fourth council meeting, so it'll be, in effect, immediately, that includes giving us staff some time to consult with the OPP, you get some arrangements made for education, and then ultimately enforcement.
That's a good, yeah.
Signed order.
Yep, very good.
Sounds good. Okay, thank you, Jeff. We're gonna go on to our next report, which will be our court's report. Jennifer?
Thank you, Mayor Smith. My report is an update regarding the legalization of cannabis. July ninth, I gave counsel an update pertaining to Bill C forty-five. On Tuesday, September twenty-fifth, Fire Chief Nordoff and myself attended an information session hosted by Middlesex London Health Unit regarding creating policies in the anticipation of the legalization of cannabis that's coming into effect October seventeenth. There was four presenters there, each gave an overview of their background, as well as what they presented on, mainly pertaining to drug testing options, recreation use of cannabis, marijuana use disorder, legalization in the workplace, training and education, and drug testing, as well as the employees' duty to accommodate. And there was no, there's no financial impacts confirmed at this time, as we're not certain of what will be expected. There is concerns that municipalities will be obligated to enforce, so my, right now at this point, my recommendation is, resolve that counsel accept the legalization of cannabis update report as presented, and that I continue to monitor the reports and media releases as they come available from the federal and provincial governments to keep counsel up to date.
Question?
It's all moved.
Okay, moved by Counsel McKinnon, and seconded by Deputy Mr. Stockman. Is there any discussion at all? All those in favor, opposed, and that's carried. Okay, thank you, Jennifer. And our next report is from our COO Treasurer, Kathy.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. The first report is the invoice payment approval, September thirteenth to two thousand and eighteen to October fourth, two thousand and eighteen. The accounts before you tonight total one million nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixty-three cents.
Okay, is there any questions on the accounts? We'll start with Counsel McKinnon, 'cause I think Deputy Mr. Stockman will have more than Counsel McKinnon, and probably some duplicates.
On, let me see which page, this is page fourteen or thirty, it says on the top, it's under number zero zero six three one zero eight two nine four, and it's in regards to the grader repairs.
Is that for Cal Tire?
Yes.
For the Cal Tire?
Cal Tire and Nortracks Canada Inc.
The Norjones one was the, was the driveshaft that we lost in the older grader.
On Walker's Drive.
On Walker's Drive, and, and the other one was for a fence post that actually went through the side wall.
Okay, I thought it might be Walker's.
When we're doing this sort of construction with graders, that we try to pull all the old fence posts out, but between the wire and missed posts and that sort of thing, the grader, missing one here and there, and it's not great when you lose a tire, but it does happen.
And my second question, all of the payments made on Walker's Drive in regards to the contractors and gravel, are we on budget with that?
Yes, so far, yes, we're, we're there, there's a few, there's a few things that have popped up, but the gravel itself is, is on budget, yes.
Thank you, I believe that's it.
My question.
Oh, dang, sorry. Okay, any other questions for the accounts?
No, 'cause I looked at that sheet too, but you covered it. So are we, are we, are we on budget so far on Walker's?
Walker's, there is a few issues that I've talked to Kathy about, but so far, we're on budget, yes.
So if I may ask this question now, the weather has held up, are we gonna get back, or you think it's gonna happen?
Oh, we're, we're going to be back there tomorrow doing the drain in Walker, I call it Walkerville at the corner of Apes and, and Walker's Road, we're gonna start there this week, putting the drain in.
I'm sorry, that's affecting the Russell property?
Yes, 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 yes. So we're back there, one of the conditions that, the last couple of weeks have been pretty darn wet, the MTO recommends by October fifteenth to have your topsoil and grass seed done, obviously, that is not gonna happen at this point. I would've liked to have been doing topsoil this week, but right now, if we can get the ditches done, I will be a happy person, considering that there may be a chance of more rain coming. One, one block has the A gravel on it, the second block, the ditching is basically done, other than about a day's worth of work, and then we can add the A gravel to that block. The middle block is the block we are waiting for it to dry out and, and work on, so we've probably still got, we've probably still got a four weeks' worth of work down there, so.
You done all the work there?
It's coming, it's coming, I, I, I was pretty happy at the start of September, not so, not so roses with the weather the last couple of weeks.
You can't help it, yes.
But we're trying hard right now to make sure all the farmers have the laneways for the beans and the corn, 'cause I know it's gonna go crazy over the next few days if it stays dry. I think we've got most of them in, we're gonna be down there tomorrow, so if any of the farmers notice a laneway out that's not been put back in for any of their fields, we'll be there, and that'll be priority to make sure everybody has access to their fields. And again, if I, Mister Mayor, if anybody does call you about a, a missing laneway, sometimes we miss them when we get flying along, so please take a note, give them my number, and, and we'll get it in as soon as we can, so.
Any other questions on the accounts? And just so everyone realizes why it's, the accounts are so high, it's also because we have the third quarter payments for the school boards and also the county, and the roadways is a high number this month, but that's also because we're, it's all in budget and all approved through the budget, so that's why it's so high. So we had a motion to resolve that counsel approve the account listings for the period of September thirteenth to October fourth, twenty eighteen, in the amount of one million nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixty-three cents as presented. Counsel Hendricks and Counsel McKinnon, all those in favor, opposed, and that's carried.
At least it's not two million.
It's a lot of money.
The second report is in regards to the Provincial Groundwater Monitoring Network Landowners' Agreement. We've been approached by the St. Clair Region Conservation Authority in regards to the renewal of their contract with the Provincial Groundwater Monitoring Network to collect data and maintain the equipment on monitoring wells. There is a Provincial Groundwater Monitoring Network monitoring well located at the Kerwood Park. The well is owned by the Ministry of the Environment and Climate Change through the Provincial Groundwater Monitoring Network. This well is twenty-two point six meters deep and goes into the bedrock. The St. Clair collects the information and the data and keeps samples on the well. St. Clair Region Conservation is requesting that a landowners' agreement be signed between the township and the, the authority in order to continue with the collection of groundwater data and retain the well. They do offer the services of providing us with the samples as they come, become available, so we will be taking them up on that offer to get the information. There is no financial impact to the township related to the landowners' agreement, it's to provide them with the authority to enter onto our property to take those samples, and staff is recommending that counsel approve the landowners' agreement with the St. Clair Region Conservation Authority, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to sign the agreement. There was a couple of minor adjustments to the agreement as presented, there was a couple of hyphens that shouldn't have been in there, so those have been corrected, as well as there was a couple of references to the town of Adelaide, and that's been updated as well.
Okay, is there any questions on that agreement? Counsel Hendricks?
I'm wondering where, where in the park is that well, and what are we, what are they monitoring for?
It's the groundwater, just to see what, what the changes are in the effects of the groundwater system.
Like, it's not nitrates, any koli or anything like that?
Nothing, nothing that we...
Just the quality of it?
Yes, the quality of the water, and it is to the northeast of the building, I believe, behind, just in behind the building, it's a green pipe, stamp pipe basically, is all that's there.
Where are we putting the portage on?
Oh, not right there.
Not right there, but in that, somewhat in that vicinity, so. I'm voting motion.
Okay, moved by Counsel McKinnon, seconded by Counsel Hendricks. Any other question?
Yeah, is this a new agreement with them, or, 'cause I've never heard of this.
Yes, this is a new agreement with them, and we had to do some investigation because we weren't aware that, we were part of the network system, but we are, and we do not own the well, but they will provide us with the information. It was installed by the Ministry of the Environment several years ago, and drinking water issues were first brought forward.
'Cause I believe, I've never seen any data on it, and...
No, I don't believe we've ever asked for it, so we will be asking for it, and then just to have that information, I think it's, it's some information that we could use.
And then when I got, reading through the legalities of it, I wasn't real comfortable with some of the legalities, but I'm not a lawyer, so.
Any other questions or anything? I'm assuming Kathy, this agreement is the same with all other municipalities that had a well, or any other landowners?
Yes.
Okay, so those moved and seconded, all those in favor, opposed, and that's carried.
My first report is in regard to the Site Plan Control and Development Agreement for twenty-eight six ten Center Road. As councils are aware, they reviewed and discussed a reduction in the security requirements for the development at twenty-eight six ten Center Road on September seventeenth. The developer has requested that the security deposit be set at twenty-five percent of the estimated internal works and facilities, and it may be submitted as an unconditional and irrevocable letter of credit in favor of the township. The resulting security deposit will be two hundred and eighty thousand four hundred ninety-eight dollars, with an allowance to reduce the security based on a three-year phased-in schedule for completion of the development, and the owner will provide Middlesex County with their required deposit for the signal lights directly, so we won't have And the owner will provide Middlesex County with the required deposit for the signal lights directly, so we won't have any, anything to do with the signal lights. Uh, the draft agreement is being revised and reviewed, it is in the hands of the developer at this moment and they're reviewing it with their legal team and coming back. So we're recommending that, um, council accept the requirements for security as said at twenty-five percent of the estimated internal works and facilities for the development. And that council authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the site plan and development agreement with two four one four nine five nine Ontario Inc. And the County of Middlesex upon receipt of the registered plan for the county road winding dedication and on the completion of phase, the phase plan required to complete Schedule C of the agreement. Which we are negotiating now, and I believe it came in this morning, so.
Any questions or anything?
So, uh, did, you obviously met with these people?
Yes.
And did you propose thirty or forty at the beginning or?
We went with thirty.
Yes.
And they, um, suggested twenty-five would be more acceptable to them.
So are we comfortable with it?
Yeah, I ran by the solicitor and she's quite comfortable because it is irrevocable and, um, letter of credit. So we will have that letter of credit on file and they cannot cancel it under the agreement.
Good, yeah, if we're comfortable, I think, you know.
Um, all the services are already at the property line as well, so this is mainly just to bring the services from the property line into their site, so, um, we would, we have a sufficient amount likely to complete everything inside, if needed to.
Yeah, okay, good, very good.
Okay, any other questions at all?
No.
And just to make sure that people in the gallery understand what we're talking about, uh, twenty-eight six ten Center Road is where the Tim Horton property is on, uh, eighty-one there. And it's a site plan and a development agreement for that property that includes, uh, hotel as well as a quick serve restaurant, so a drive-through, um, a restaurant. And the third phase is a truck, gas station.
There's a gas bar and a quick serve, we're first phase one overlaid with the hotel and the third, the final phase will be a sit-down restaurant.
Thank you. Okay, so we have the recommendation there in that the first one is for the security deposit at the twenty-five percent, you remember, we're seconded by Council Sanders and Council McKinnon. All those in favor, opposed and carried.
Okay, agreed.
And the next one is, um, resolve that council authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the site plan and development agreement with two four one four nine five nine Ontario Inc. and the, and the County of Middlesex upon receipt of the registered plan for the county road winding dedication and the completion of phase plan required to complete Schedule C of the agreement. Council Hendricks and Council McKinnon, all those in favor, opposed and not scared. So hopefully they'll get the shovel in the ground soon.
Uh, the next report is in regards to the Township Signage Mark for Mayor for Mayor's Project, which has been underway for quite some time. I have contacted two companies, um, because they have to invest in designing a layout and stuff and they may not get the contract. Neither of the companies provided an actual sign for the township, but they did provide some ideas on what they've done previously for other, other municipalities or other businesses. Um, there's information on your desk tonight, uh, the quote, the first quote was from Cedar Signs and they estimated, this is based on a four foot by eight foot six millimeter alu panel sign, which is a rather large sign, so the first recommendation is that we're going to reduce it to a more reasonable sign for our entrances. Uh, this was based on the four by eight. Cedar Signs quoted a price of four hundred dollars to five hundred dollars per sign, based, depending on what the final layout is. And CR Creative quoted a cost of six hundred and seventy-two dollars. Now that is just a straight, flat rectangle shape. If we wanted to do any sort of custom cutting, which goes around to take advantage of the circular, um, logo, there is an additional fee that they would provide a quote on once, uh, they have the contract. Uh, there's always freight for delivery of the signs, plus taxes, plus some for, um, installation, both labor and equipment, which our work staff is able to do. So what we're, what we've looked at so far are approximately twenty signs at various entrances at a rough price of about six hundred dollars each. That's, um, going with the, the, um, price from Cedar Signs, just because it's a more effective price right from the get-go. So we can get more signs for likely a lesser price altogether, all in. And then we would get the posts and the related supplies, the washers and bolts, and we have approximately an investment of thirteen thousand dollars initially. And included in that would be to get some signs as well as a name bar, which would be, um, if you take a look at the Dona Fiume one, which would be a similar type of structure. And then where we have somewhere underneath the actual sign itself, across the bar, we could put a name bar and use something like, uh, Napier Public Works, Adelaide Public Works and identify the different buildings and, uh, places, especially with the, uh, by recruit subdivision. We could also put it across there underneath the actual sign as an additional bar across the bottom. And it's estimated about thirty-five hundred dollars, uh, we'd have to get the price from them for the, uh, specialized little name bar. But, um, the recommendation would be to draft a sign similar to the one that was proposed by CR Creative for the, um, other municipality with the circular top probably off to the left to some degree and then fit the wording underneath it. And get the signs from Cedar Signs and have them fitted for layout and be drafting. Being recommended that we, um, eliminate, uh, welcome or any sort of verbiage like that. As well as not to put the population on there and that we don't have to update signs on a, on a more recent basis, so. That's the recommendation that's before council tonight and that still leaves, we had a thirty thousand dollar contribution from the Mayor for Mayor's Fund to the Mayor for Mayor's Fund, so it still leaves us with some additional room to do additional signage, um, once the initial first round is completed.
So I'm saying your recommendation is to go with Cedar Signs, and they provide, um.
They will provide a design for us, um, and then have them go ahead and prepare the signs and, uh, start to get them ready to be rolled out later on this year. There is about a two-week, both companies said it would be at least a two-week, uh, timeframe to get the signs.
And will council, like, will we get a few different designs council at the site on it, or just they will design something and we just go for it?
They will likely design something, if there's anything that council wants to see in it, we can put in there, but, um, I think that the simpler the better for this kind of a project. And we can circulate to council and we can have a look at the, at the, similar to what we did with the logos as well.
So they'll design one and then we get, say, we have a chance, look at it and decide what we're gonna do with it.
Yes.
And, uh, we know what we want on it?
Uh, Township of Adelaide Metcalf.
That's it, just like, if we're talking something like this one?
Yes.
I kind of like it. Okay.
Okay, Council McKinnon?
Is Cedar Signs, is that the one that's, uh, by Stradivarius or Seasons?
No, so Cedar Signs is out of, it's out of Cambridge and that's who Jeff uses for, uh, road signs and that type of thing.
John?
John.
Okay.
Yeah, and I've actually dealt with them personally as well and they're a great crew over there and they, they're very quick on their turn and such. Any other questions or anything about the report? Uh, I think Jennifer's putting together a motion of some sort.
I have, uh, resolved that council approve the, um, draft sign as proposed with Cedar Signs for council approval.
You haven't really seen the sign yet.
Well, you've, you've seen what's on Kathy's report.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Okay.
So as proposed, which is the Township of Dona Fiume.
Dona Fiume, yeah, yeah. Gonna move it?
I'll move it.
Moved by Council Sanders and seconded by Council Hendricks, any further discussion? Deputy Stockman?
So that is a three by six as opposed to a four by eight.
Yes. Yes, so it'll be a smaller sign, we're not going to go with four by eight because it is a rather large sign. And there may be some intersections where a large sign like that will just be unable to be installed, so going with something smaller, a three by six or a, a scalable number to that effect will give us a much more, um, flexibility with being able to put the signs out where we like to locate them.
Okay, Mayor, just, just so a reference, the old signs are roughly three by six. Uh, North Middlesex signs are roughly, if you've been out and you see the North Middlesex signs, they're three by six, so.
That's a good sign.
Yeah, a four by eight, that, four by eight, that's a big sign.
That's a big, yeah, right.
No, no, I think that's big. So they're designed one, it's gonna come back to council, we have a look at it, we're not happy, we can change our minds.
Excellent.
That's the plan.
Excellent, okay.
Okay.
Okay, so it's moved and seconded by Council Sanders and Council Hendricks, all those in favor, opposed and not scared.
Last was just a brief financial update on your desk as well as the payroll report for the month of September two thousand and eighteen.
Okay, is there any questions on that financial update on the payroll? I said one question is for an update, our summer employee Kyle, is he still at it?
He is a little bit, but it's gradually getting less and less if we need him, for instance, we're gonna start down on the Walkers again tomorrow. I've asked him to come in and, uh, help us, give us a hand, but through last week it was very hit and miss due to the rain, so it's, it's nice, he's comfortable with that and, yeah, but it is coming to an end.
Excellent, okay, any other questions at all?
And if I may, also, um, Kyle's completed, um, the, um, traffic count for the township this year, so that project has been wrapped up.
Has just basically been wrapped up, I think that today was the last, uh, traffic count and, yep.
Oh, good, I missed out on it, I forgot about that.
So if I may ask, did you, did you do a lot of the main roads or all of them or?
All the roads, other than the, um, the, the urban, we didn't get into, uh, uh, some of the ones in town. But yeah, no, we did them all, we did all the rural and we did them block by block, so we can see, for instance, example is, uh, starting at Creathia Wood and seeing as each block goes through, cutting right over to, to South, so we can see each block.
So, okay, are you gonna have a, a print out of that, or is I'd be actually interested to see how many went down Melwood or?
The next step is to, to get it in a, in an Excel form where everybody can take a look at it and see what's going on.
Okay.
And, and what, what that does is, um, stops the one person from running over in front of their place, so we can. So we can see each block, um, so I, I'm just, I'm.
And, and did you also do like the side roads?
Yeah, so like, uh, everything from s- s- school we talked about, the only side road that has not been done, I'll be honest with you, is, uh, Newell.
The seed and school and.
Newell, we have Newell is the only side road that has not been done.
That could probably survive.
But it's still nice to know who goes down.
Yeah, that's very, that will be interesting.
Uh, no, they'll, they'll all be done, so Newell is, is one of the only ones, but they've all been done right from the south to the north.
There you go.
Excellent, okay, so to get back to the financial report, is there any questions on that? No, so we need a motion to resolve that council accepts the financial report going to the September twenty eighteen payroll as presented by the CEO Treasurer. Council McKinnon and Deputy Stockman, all those in favor, opposed and not scared. Okay, that's good for our staff reports, do you have anything for other business at all? Council Hendricks?
Just wondering, um, were we supposed to see a report fairly soon about blue water and garbage and?
Yes, the wheelie bins. Yes, we're, we're still gathering more data, we've only been doing the, um, collection and alternate method for a few months now, so we're working on that, so it'll likely be towards the end of the year.
Okay, Council McKinnon?
I wondered, has the request for proposal regarding, uh, Kerwood Park been submitted?
It's circulated.
Circulated?
Yes, it's gone to several engineering companies that provide those services.
And the train whistle report on Pike Road?
Uh, I believe that was supposed to be done last year with that report, but it did not.
Didn't address the.
Didn't address the actual whistling issue, did we?
That's right.
No, there was a report done, but we're not sure if it addressed the actual distances and did the measuring, um, it said all of our, our costumes were to s- today's standard. But whether it was in conformity with the new, um, regulations that are coming into play for twenty nineteen, I believe, so.
Okay, and the revitalization grant for downtown area, did we get a report for that or are we working on one for that so we can allocate more funds?
To figure out what we're going to, how you can allocate the funds, yes.
Okay. And, uh, my neighbor Wade Engold, um, had asked Jim to do a drainage repair. But, and he said it was two years ago and it's yet to be completed, so I just wondered if Jim could get in touch with Wade and, uh, ask him, he doesn't want them to go in now because of the beans and because the road department took three rows of his beans away. And my last one is, um, a repair asked if there was any way that, uh, the municipality or the county could look at expanding that parking lot at twenty-two and eighty-one. That there's more and more people that are using that and overflowing to the other side. And I said I wasn't sure who owned the property, but we could, uh, possibly find out.
Let me count it.
I don't know.
I don't know if it is counting or.
That's really a question.
I don't know, we'd have to look into that.
I know we don't know.
Okay, Secretary?
So, I, I guess my final say is, given that, um, the existing council could be done by November thirtieth, could we have these for, uh, our first meeting in November? Is that too much?
So you're asked, uh, park, um, engineering, that report, it's circulated, Kathy, when is that going to come back?
Uh, for the next meeting.
Okay, so that will be there?
Yeah, so that's, it's to be closed in time for that.
Yeah, and then the train whistle report, that was not, I don't think, on anybody's agenda because it was not included in the twenty eighteen budget.
No.
Okay.
So I think.
So that can't?
That can, I, I think if the next term of council wants to look at that, that will have to be a twenty nineteen budget item.
Yeah.
Um, the grant for the downtown revitalized street, uh, streets.
Downtown.
We didn't have a report prepared for you with some options for the funding.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And then, uh, the drainage repair, that will have to just go to Jim.
No, we're, something like that, you're actually doing some sort of content at, from review.
Yeah, and one, are, are we re-agregizing for the position?
No, I, I've heard the same thing.
Yeah.
No, we have our new camp, our candidate work, started work this morning, it is Jessica Buttry.
Okay, so it's been allocated? Okay.
Um, did you hear that? Uh, Kathy, want to do that?
Our new, uh, financial assistant started this morning and it's Jessica Buttry.
Okay, uh, Benny, do you have any other questions at all?
No, that's it, thank you.
Okay, Deputy Stockman?
Um, I had a citizen, after the all candidates meeting, the citizen member of the Parks and Recreation Committee was pretty frustrated with the lack of progress.
Of what the, the process of.
The whole Parks and Recreation Committee, the lack of progress.
Yeah.
This person was, uh, quite animated.
Who I know?
Or might know.
Yeah, and I think, uh, the thing is that there's a number of things that could have been done over the last, uh, year. However, we need to get the, the grand scheme of thinking, what we're wanting to do as a whole and council needs to approve that. That's not something that the Parks and Recreation Committee has approved, can approve, that's something that council needs to approve. And then from there, moving forward with it, uh, I know Benny was, or Council McKinnon was saying, you know, up, you know, upgrading the fence and doing all those types of things. We could have done that, but we don't know if the entranceway is going to be changed or if, you know, any layout's gonna be changed in the park. So there's no sense of, um, putting thousand dollars into the park in twenty eighteen when we didn't have a full, like a fulsome plan put in place because we could be changing, uh, different things, so that's why, you know, this year there wasn't anything completed because, you know, the, I don't think taxpayers. the, I don't think taxpayers would like it if we went ahead and improved the park and then we got a new plan and we approved it and then we decided that we're actually gonna rip out what we just put in. So I think financially, um, for the taxpayers and, and council, it only made sense to wait for an approved plan. Deputy Stockman?
But there was never a report from Parks and Recreation that came to council.
No, there hasn't been. So I got a question. So we hired someone to look into this, am I right? Spreets?
You will be hiring someone to look in.
We haven't hired anybody yet.
No.
And they're gonna draw up a plan?
Right.
Am I correct?
They're going to look at everything from drainage in the ingra, the in-ground infrastructure right through to, um, what building should be there, what, um, if you're going to put a building up, what do you put in? What do you look at washroom wise, what do you need for washrooms, the whole.
I totally agree with that, but I thought maybe six months ago we had them guys coming already.
No, the, the RFP is going out. It's going, the RFP is out, so we're, it's coming back for the November meeting.
So then hopefully over the winter.
They will have it prepared.
They will have it prepared and we can do something next year.
Correct.
I agree that if we should do it at once, I'm not disagree with that. The problem mine is we sat a year, we didn't do anything. We should have been on this maybe a little sooner, but it is what it is now, but hopefully by, if we hire a firm and they're gonna draw up something that council can decide, say, oh wait, next year we're gonna go through this park. And we're gonna do some work. Because I can see where some of the people are upset. I can, I fully understand. And the way the grass has been looked after, it, 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 it's an issue and it's, that's something that has to change next year. This grass business in the township, whether it costs us four or five thousand more, I don't care. It should be done right. We shouldn't have to chase those people around every day, cut, cut, don't cut. I come to the meeting the other day here and the grass is not long. That's not right. So I prob, I won't be here, but hire somebody that's, we had, Pavy was an excellent man and I think we, uh, last spring we should have said, okay, it's gonna cost a couple of thousand dollars more, but we're going with a guy that looks out and does it right. I think the township deserves to have the grass cut on time everywhere. That's part of the budget, that's part of the cost. And you want something reliable. I don't want Karen the case or anybody else to hound these guys, cut, cut. That should be done automatic. That's their job. That's the contract.
Okay, is there any other questions just about the park, not about grass? That'd be something we'll deal with next year or whoever's sitting around the table deals with next year. Um, Nick, was that your other question for other business? Council Sanders or Council McKinnon, is anything for other business? Okay, just, uh, update from county council. So as I said, we had a county council meeting, uh, this afternoon. We had an update, uh, from the Middlesex London Health Unit, so if you remember, they came here as a delegation to, uh, get some feedback from the local councils and everything. Um, they were not disappointed, they understand the council, uh, members are very busy, it's an election year and everything else. But there was only actually fourteen council members in total throughout the entire county that, um, responded to the survey. Uh, so that's twenty-nine percent or something like that, so that, you know, they're a little disappointed, but they understand, um, what, you know, there's, people are, you know, they're busy. Um, so I recommend if you could, uh, look on to the county, uh, council agenda to see kind of their eight, their eight topics that they're looking at and, uh, you know, main points for the county as to what they're looking at improving. Uh, they are looking at possibly coming up to lower tiers and even the county to, uh, give regular updates as to what the health unit's doing, so there's more of a presence in the county. Uh, not what they're, you know, in the past where there hasn't been very many updates. Um, also in the, recently in the news, the, um, I'm not sure if you've seen, but our fire prevention officer was, uh, in the Lemon Free Press and they're trying to, um, work with agriculture livestock, uh, individuals and, you know, just giving some more preventative information out there about, um, hopefully stopping any livestock fires and that type of thing. So that's also, and they're working with Farm and Food Care which is based out of, um, wealth. Um, the other interesting one, uh, so the agenda which we're all using, uh, tonight, so, um, county council has decided that we're going to, uh, purchase that uh, software, so prior to this, it's been on a, um, like a user pay agreement. Um, so instead of paying, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars each year to use that program, it's going to be purchased for seventy-five thousand dollars altogether. So it was deferred, it was, there was no payment made in the last three years and the idea was, or whether we're, we're gonna pay for it or not. Uh, so if we're going to continue to kind of lease the program, it was gonna cost, up until twenty-twenty, it was gonna be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or we buy it outright, uh, for seventy-five and it only made sense to do that transfer. So, uh, the County of Middlesex will own the agenda application. Um, and then if there's any updates or anything that needs to be done, they'll obviously have to, um, tender that out or get somebody to update that. Yeah, Deputy Stockman?
They were delinquent by three years?
No, it was in agreement with the, it was a deferred payment. It wasn't, they, they didn't.
They used, they used it for three years, but didn't pay for three years.
It was in agreement with the, the company as to whether or not they want, what the process would be. Yeah. Um, and then, what was the other one? There, the County of Middlesex is looking at updating the official plan with regards to the transportation policies. Uh, so one thing that will affect us if we, if it gets changed is the, um, when a severance application comes forward to our local tiers. Um, right now it's the, the land dedicated on the severed parcel. Um, gets, there's, there's, what is this meters, Kathy, fifteen?
Uh, it's eighteen and fifty depending on his arterial or collecting.
So depending on the road, it's, there's a, the dedication from the center line to the property on the severed parcel. We're looking at changing that to be the severed and retained. Um, and it only makes sense, other municipalities are doing that. Um, cause if there's any widening or anything that goes on, if you only have one portion of the, of that property then you're gonna, going to have to look at its regeding, that lane and that costs a lot of money. Uh, so changing that from just the, uh, severed to the retained, uh, going forward, it would make sense from the county's perspective and I think it only makes sense to the, the County of Middlesex, uh, taxpayers. Um, and that's about it. Oh, there was one other one. Uh, we had a closed session regarding, um, the servicing of the fire, um, I'm, I'm blanking, the fire service, the, the call service that goes to Stratford.
Oh, the dispatch.
Dispatch, thank you. So dispatch, so that's done at the Stratfordshire Police Services. Um, so there was a upgrade, update to that, um, agreement. It's going to be for a ten-year period. That agreement will be posted on the website, uh, later this week as it was done in close, but now that it's approved, it will be, uh, posted. Um, and that, uh, after that discussion, there will be a report that comes to county council in regards to, um, burn permit fees and, uh, that type of thing, and that will have to be a discussion at county council as to whether or not are those related fees then get passed down to the lower tiers or if it's just a, a part of, um, the county council budget. So that's something that will come forward and it'll be a little more clear once the agreement is public and that, uh, report comes forward. So that's, uh, the hot, the main topics that we talked about at county council. Is there any questions or anything else for other business?
Just one quick comment, I never, a little, little bit of a sink here, just to give everybody an update. Uh, grass cutting has been completed, uh, with this, uh, wet weather. We've gone to a couple of other activities, so grass cutting is complete. Um, I'm pretty sure that by tomorrow, all the roads will have their fall first round of grading done for the farmers so they can, wagons aren't banging and crashing out there, so I know up north, uh, the roads are all done and down south they have a few more still to do. So just, just so everybody's aware of what happened.
Good.
Excellent. Okay, if there's nothing else, just also add that we had the open house for Eldon Bryant, um, last Thursday. It was well attended. I think, uh, everyone enjoyed themselves and I think Eldon also appreciated it very much, so.
Yeah, he did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if there's nothing else, we have our bylaws before us, so we have, uh, resolve that the first, second, that the first and second reading be given to bylaw number fifty-three two thousand and eighteen, which is the zoning bylaw amendment ZVA four thousand and eighteen, which is the McCullar, um, application and that the bylaw be signed by the mayor and clerk.
Yep.
Council McKinnon and seconded by Council Sanders. All those in favor? Opposed and not carried. And then the last bylaws, resolve that all three readings be given to bylaw number fifty-two two thousand and eighteen, zoning law, bylaw amendment, uh, thirteen two thousand and eighteen, which is the Milligan application. And bylaw number fifty-four two thousand and eighteen, confirm council proceedings. And that the bylaws be signed by the mayor and clerk and the court seal be attached. Council Ken and Council Hendricks, all those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. And, uh, motion to adjourn at eight twenty PM. Council Sanders and Council Hendricks, all those in favor? Opposed, carried.